Okay, thanks, Nonna. Okay, it is six twelve and we'll start our work session. It looks like you've got several discussion items already out here for us and thank you very much for the putting the time limits on each one of those so we don't, you know, go down a rabbit hole of one and then forget the other ones. I appreciate that. So it looks like unless there's anything Jason and you want to discuss, we'll just go, we'll launch right into it.
Yeah, I'll just, I just want to make a few comments just to you guys and to kind of the public here as well. So really, the short-term rentals are a really good thing for our community as long as they're in balance. They definitely provide like a needed capacity for the visitor industry that the hotels can't carry and it's also just kind of a different demographic. And we also realize that Seward is not a cheap place to live and many people depend on short-term rentals to help supplement their income or have businesses that involve short-term rentals that they need to, that's what they do in life. And so, but at the same time too, we have, whenever we get a listing, the most recent one was Mayor Terry's house, our office is usually flooded with calls from people that are outside the city or sometimes outside the state that want to, they just want to know, can I buy that for whole house short-term rental type of thing. And so we know that there's a pretty high demand in that case, but with that, we are not seeking to shut down short-term rentals that are currently operating at all. I know that there's a lot of places in this world, like I think Oahu and New York City were kind of some of the most recent ones that are just completely getting rid of them. But that would really negatively impact our community. And so if anyone's like currently operating our philosophy, it's like, that's not really what we're worried about. We're worried kind of, on the city's part, we're worried about, as we're putting a lot of money into investing in infrastructure for utilities to, for people to build more homes or for neighborhoods, that type of thing. We just want to protect that from being land speculated. So that's kind of our intent behind this. And just, if anyone's been operating, that's, they're not, they'd be like grandfather closet and kind of that's our feeling about things. But kind of, we wanted to bring that to you guys and have you guys give us some guidance and recommendations around that. So we did put some more information in here as requested. Last meeting, we had this. And so, yeah, I'll just let you guys kind of go through the discussion line. You can bounce anything out of us if you have any questions.
Sure. I appreciate the discussion points that you put in here to get us to move forward on this. One thing I've noticed, like a lot of the things in the packet that you sent forward to us, there were areas that were like, you know, tourist towns, some sort that were like ski towns. Well, it started out that way. Seward didn't start out as a tourist town, so we have to keep a balance of the community of, as a whole, that we have a core demographic of people that want to just live here and raise their families and the rest. And we have to keep that before in front of our minds because, as we've discussed before, we had a tendency to be a little bit more focused on, and rightly so, because it's good business in the tourism industry, but it seems to be creating a bit of an unbalance for the regular community. So I think that's where, I think it's a good time for us to look at the short-term rentals and where we should go with those. So your first bullet point here that you guys had put on here is how many permits should the city allow? You know, and I like the fact that you put it on space on operational history, you know, who's done what and how long they've been in business. I, you know, I think my personal view is I think we're pretty reasonably saturated at this point in time. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to penalize anybody who's operating and say you can't have it anymore. I think we, you know, being able to, people who have bed and breakfast and are going through, or the lodging industry, short-term rentals, that they can continue to operate. People who, until we change the regulations to support that, that if somebody's working toward one, we'll probably have, we'll continue to have to support that since it's well within code that they have. But I think, you know, we should probably look at putting a reasonable, I guess, top level, you know, or a shelf to that as how many more would come through on that. That's just my feel. Does anybody else have a, in the audience?
I, I have to wrap my head around this. I've made investments and I don't have the money to start building right away because you guys are going to decide to change the code and ordinances. Basically, I'll put it in a nutshell. I have commercial lots that I am not going to build a single-family residence on for somebody to conveniently live downtown on a commercial lot in a single-family residence. So I will sit on those for the rest of my life and make sure that they stay empty and nothing comes of them, if this is where we're going, in commercial business district.
Okay.
I just thought of this as I was sitting here. One thought that I had was, I feel slightly troubled by people that own a home downtown and that are not in a bed and, not running it as a bed and breakfast. But say perhaps, a single, a woman or a man, it could be either, their family is raised, they're out of the house, they're gone, maybe, maybe she's a widow and she decides to run extra rooms in her house. She owns that house, she's owned it a long time. She may be on commercial land, it may be zoned where she could do that. I just feel limiting people on something that downtown is a bustling downtown and it's within walking distance for travelers and businesses. And I feel protective of that. And I feel like single-family homes can be got further out of town. They don't have to be right in town. So, anyway, I just thought of that, you know, if somebody has a home, they should be, and it's zoned for it, they should be able to run rooms if they, if they live there. I specifically feel like kind of if they live there, but.
But what you're referring to is that somebody who's actually a citizen of Seward has that, has some requirements, you know, has, has that ability to do that, but you don't want.
They may have been thinking about it for years.
Right.
And they're not able to. And now all of a sudden, they're, they can't. And they're in a zoned area where they knew they were all along. And, and then suddenly that just changed. So that's bothersome to me.
I just want to say, I appreciate the opening comments. I know this, things are kind of, kind of hot. I'm here to listen and learn and see what parts of this make sense. And I appreciate you guys taking on something very difficult. Just a little cautionary tale. Let's put our bill to supply, that kind of thing. We just got to be careful, not throw the baby out with bathwater as we go through this whole process of creating a situation where you get a lot of dollars that are coming in from a certain industry. You've got to balance that with those other things that, I've read the whole packet, and a balance of things. But let's just, I'm here to listen and learn and see what comes out of this compromise tonight. But it seems a little, if I read this whole thing and just took it as law, this is pretty prescriptive and I could see why it would make people pretty upset. So I'm looking forward to hearing the compromises and the discussion tonight because I think there's got to be some kind of compromise to achieve what you're trying to do and at the same time, not scare businesses and economic gain ways as well and investment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand the concerns and I sympathize. I'm having a hard time understanding the correlation between short-term rentals and long-term rentals or housing. Because just because you put a cap on this or lower this doesn't mean this is going to go up. For example, I have a vacation rental I have for 20-plus years. So I figure I'm grandfathered in, it's probably not going to affect me. But even if you shut me down, there is no way I am going to offer a long-term rental or permanent housing to anyone. And my guess is there's plenty of people out there, if they, if they go away, they're not going to provide more of the other thing. So I feel like there's apples and oranges that you're trying to compare and mix here. And I hope that you will consider that as you're working through this.
Ms. Guest, ready?
Thank you. Just really quick, I know in the administration's opening comments saying something about land speculators, and I don't know if this is the proper place to address that or if there's a bullet point later, but one suggestion would just be making sure that anybody that applies for a lodging permit is a registered voter of the Kenai Peninsula.
Or perhaps a resident of Seward.
Yeah, but then if you, for example, I know a couple people that have homes just on the other side of the bridge and they have a commercial space in town and they want to run right downtown, a rental over the top of their commercial space. I mean, I don't know if you can make like a Bear Creek Flood Board District area or something that encompasses us, but.
Yeah, I think we'd like to protect the town from, like you're saying, speculators and the rest because as you go through the packet that was there, I think you did, you have like 28 people that were not residents of Seward that were operating, 28 or 32, I forget what it was, but there was a significant amount of people that aren't from Seward, don't, you know, don't have that. And that's, that's the concern is, is there's an awful, you know, the town, we have to keep the town for the people in a lot of ways. And I have no problem with people who have residences and they want to do additional kind of things. You know, that's, that certainly makes good sense, but, you know, I just hate to have places be bought up by so many people elsewhere. And then what happens is they roll up the sidewalks when the tourist season goes over. I've seen that in New York, I've seen it in a lot of places, and it destroys communities.
Yeah. And we do want, all this too, is we do want to have very, things that are favorable, regulations that are favorable to residents or people in the area. And so that's 100% what we're kind of looking for. And I do think when I hear, in reading through some of the things, and I think it was Mary Ann, I don't know who it was, can't remember who the comment was. But we, like for instance, if someone has a traditional bed and breakfast, that has like a no net damage effect on it all and anything, and that's actually like a great way. So in some ways, you could, I mean, if we're looking at flexible types of regulation, you know, resident, bed and breakfast, traditional, in some ways, you could probably make the argument that we didn't, you don't need to actually like limit those permits. And so that way, it's, it's favorable to residents, it's not doing anything having like a poor net effect on the overall housing.
Yeah, I mean, people living in their own home are doing what they, what they like to do with their own land and their own property. They are Seward residents and I think that's, that's, you know, that's fair, certainly. Yeah, it's, I mean, I, I hadn't bed and breakfast for eight years and it was out of my home. I'd lived in it right down on Fourth Avenue. It was our full house and we ran the whole thing within code. And so it was, it was fine. It was early, back in the early 90s. So, you know, or mid 90s. So it's, you know, that's a, that's very doable for people. I don't think that's a challenge for anybody.
But it was included in the permitting necessity. When I read it, it said that you had to have permits per room.
Right, you have to be cleared for the, oh, per room?
Yeah, it included it in the necessity to have a permit slot. So if you don't get it this year, you can't decide to run a bed and breakfast next year if you didn't get it this year and run it. So that seems to me, that doesn't, I don't think that would be fair to people that own a home. If they bought it this year or bought it last year or if they've had it 20 years and now next year they can't run it as a bed and breakfast because they didn't get a permit this year.
Could be, could be reserved the permits for maybe local residents. I think kind of what the point is, is to try and keep outside investors from coming in and turning these whole, whole homes into rentals. So I wonder if there's a way to maybe.
Standalone rentals you're talking about?
Yeah, like whole house, whole house rentals.
I agree with that. I'm just talking, I was just focusing on the fact that it's, when I read the reg that came out, it included bed and breakfast. People that live in their home and are running rooms, you have to get it permitted this year. That's what I heard. And if it's, if you're just still discussing that and maybe that's not going to be the law, then.
Yeah, these are discussions. This is all, this is all just.
That's what you're talking, that's what you're trying to decide.
What are we trying to do? What's the best solution for, for the community and how can we do it? No, this is, no, definitely, this is just the initial discussions on how do we fix the problem. And you bring up some valid points.
The, you know, locals who want to do something out of their home, that makes perfect sense. Absolutely. You know, so, and, and these bullet points that are on here are more a point of discussion for point, counterpoint to bring up the pros and cons, which is perfect what you're doing.
Well, outside investors would be tough because, but then you've also got people that are inside investors that, you know, want to buy another property and expand. So you're, so then maybe a distinction there could be made, people that are residents here could do that.
Yeah.
And those that are from California or some other state or country.
I feel like if you, I feel like you should be a resident if you're going to get these permits because this is your, your hometown, your own state at least. I'm not opposed to somebody from Fairbanks maybe having one or something because there's only so many of us here in the state. But having investors outside come in and buy everything and then they jack it all up and then they're just using it during the season, then it rolls up and nobody can sit in the winter. Or even using it in the winter, it should be long-term probably. But at the same time, I can't justify buying a house if I didn't make income off of it. I just, the numbers don't make sense. I can't get my head wrapped around the numbers here yet. So to me, it's like I'm going to build, I'll build my own. But everybody can't build something. So there's got to be a way for us to look at and say, and I don't know if we can, if that's even legal, to say, you can't buy it because you don't live here. Or you can't utilize it for this because you don't live here. So how do we, can we maybe make some kind of stipulation that you can get a permit with an Alaskan driver's license? You've got a residency card or you have a, I don't know, the voter ID. Is that something we can do? I don't, I don't know that we can, but I was thinking that would maybe be something that would deter people from buying it that live in California, live in Australia or wherever.
Are there, are there conditions for that that you know of that, you know, like somebody has a piece of property, should they, you know, have it for a period of time, you know, before they start doing something? Or should it just be, you know, can we even put, you know, put in those, you know, part of the, I don't know, either a CUP or a requirement to go forward of Alaska residency?
Yeah, I think there is probably for permitting, we, the city would have control of a short-term kind of permits, that you could do something like that. You did say something though, I just want to get clarification because I know there's another point here, but then putting kind of another barrier for speculation would be that you can't, if you're a non, if you're, if you're having it open, if you were, if it were a non-resident person, you have to wait like three years to apply for a short-term rental permit, which might put enough of a barrier for land speculation. But, but yeah, we can put, I mean, you could do a voter registration, either like Seward Inside City Limits in Bear Creek, which would cover, I think, are those the two voting precincts for the area? Because I know I voted Bear Creek, but you could do something like that where the, your permits are favorable that way.
Yeah, but if we have the latitude to write stuff like, like that in there, that would be, give us some, some options, certainly. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Brennan?
No, no, maybe about, talking about putting a permit and then having to apply for it the year prior. I don't know. I guess, especially with people getting, getting their wheels turned at different times or whatever. It's like, well, I'm just not getting where I can start getting some stuff done. And it's taken me a year to get there. So it's like, just because the ideas are in my head, don't mean I can actually do it. So maybe not make it a yearly thing like, oh, you can only get this on January 31st, the option closes. So probably not putting the time limit on the permit where you can get the permit anytime you're ready to, to apply for it.
I think what that, one of the things that does tie into is that we did want to have, because when we're looking at something like this, the, you can't account for every situation that's like fair and right necessarily, but to be able to have, make sure you have a process in there where it's a petition process or, or something like that where they could say, hey, look, I made an investment in my property, I didn't get a permit last year. And you could, we could have that as a P and Z process where you can look at granting permits that way.
Possibly, it's sort of like an incremental kind of thing in some respects or, because you can apply for a permit just about any time you need to at this point in time.
Right.
If we know the person's from Seward or the greater metropolitan area and can apply for, for those kind of things, then, then we know who they are and there's, there's not a challenge there. But if we have, you know, you know, if there's somebody saying, well, my intent is to move to Seward, but yet they aren't here.
Right, yeah.
Then I, then I would have a challenge. There's too, there's too many loopholes there, I think. So.
It seems like it should be separate, like the residential and that commercial. So for example, if you see those commercial properties, that's not going to be, you know, it's zoned that way for a reason. So like capping the residential ones at where they're at.
I think that's always the problem because.
And maybe allowing.
Especially in R1 areas as well as, you know, how, how those are run and people are concerned about how many of those whole house rentals or whatever.
Right. So I think almost those, because they're made for, you know, supposed to be zoned for families.
Yeah.
You know, and commercial, could have more variety of income-based businesses.
Yeah, and I understand the downtown and the, and the rest. I mean, that certainly makes good sense. You know, that's why you have a lot more, you know, with auto-commercial and a variety, though you have, you can have a wide spectrum of things that you can do there. Whereas in residential, you want residential. Okay. So I think what it is, is right now, limiting permits is probably not something we're going to necessarily look at at this point in time, obviously. I mean, we can continue to discuss because we have these other things that are, are, you know, probably not, you know, that would be just too, too hard to, you know, wrap your head around right now. Like example, you know, the one with the woman who's got the, you know, husband died and has a big house, wants to do that stuff. You know, that wasn't even, you know, in the, in the grid square, so to speak. So, you know, it may be just a case-by-case basis, how long have you lived in Seward? We'd have to write up a certain amount of criteria for that.
Or else we could just say if you're, if you, if you're doing your traditional bed and breakfast out of your residence, like we have now with up to 50 or so in your bedrooms, we don't, we don't put a cap on those permits. And so they're not even included in the whole game of things.
Possibly.
And look at the permits outside of that as a whole other subsector. I mean, those would still be permitted, but they wouldn't be, they'd be, they'd almost be like a different permit versus other types of lodging, you know, short-term rental permits.
So what you would say is you permit the whole, you know, just those areas, like in your standard bed and breakfast, it's that house, you can run X amount of rooms and.
Yeah, and any resident.
It doesn't exceed 50%?
Yeah, and you resident can do it, type of situation, because it's not impacting housing negatively, it supplements their income. It's providing more capacity for lodging for other businesses, but yet it's not doing, it's not having a, a negative net effect on.
Yeah.
A housing situation. So you could almost take those and block those out and just say, we're not even going to, as long as you're a resident.
And you're living at your house.
Living in your house, then we're not even going to, you know, you can, so that would be one way to look at that.
Possibly. It might make, gives people a lot of flexibility because I wouldn't want to be told what to do in my own house.
Right.
You know, in some respects, so. Sir?
Just putting some perspective on, so I'm Tony LaBrack. I own the government Cape House, so historic home down here, which I've been working on a good part of a decade. I vote Seward, I love Seward. There's a lot of developments where some of us are here. The investment that we put into our homes, we share those with other people. And yes, I do rent them out as vacation rentals. Frankly, that renovation is very expensive, living here is very expensive, utilities are very expensive. I quite frankly could not afford to go just long-term rental. I love my home, I invest my time in civic things, I'm involved just like you guys are in other things. And I love this town. The only reason I bring that up is to tell you, there's so many different cases for every reason. You're in a very difficult spot because you've got to come up with a fair and equitable process. And what about this person versus this person versus this person versus this? It's really difficult to come up with a standardized process that's going to allow not only the economic development of people to be able to maintain their home, invest in their homes, particularly historic homes, 100-plus year old, year old homes or new homes even just maintaining them. Seward itself was founded, yes, on people coming here to come with the railroad, to build dress shops, to build commercial things. They came here, they came to speculate. I agree with you. Two things. One, I don't want necessarily people coming from all the outside buying anything, I'm taking up even historic characters Seward, tearing houses down, changing things. I don't want to see that. And I am more than willing to pay my fair share. I don't even link at the stuff that you guys have on here about raising costs of permits and all, it's just my personal thing. That's not my, my concern. My concern is that we get some kind of prescriptive situation that says you can no longer operate like you do. And I probably am one of those grandfather people, but I'm just looking at the history and the flavor of where Seward started and where Seward needs to be to continue to be a vibrant, vibrant community. And just to tell you, there's a lot of us, not just me, I know other people in this room, they put a ton of their time and energy into preserving the history, the fabric of their homes, the fabric of this community. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It's a tough situation. But identifying myself and I'm just being, by the crowds, I vote here, I don't live here 365 days a year. I don't. I love it. And if I could, I would. At some point, I would. But right now, I don't. But I vote here, I live here a good part of the year, and I invest my time, my effort and all my resources and my family in this community. Every one of us is different, but all have different major job.
I have another comment. On page five, it says, what restrictions should be placed on short-term rentals? The permit does not stay in the property. If an individual sells their property, they lose the permit. And then should they, the next buyer be here two, three, five years after purchasing a property? I think that's got to go. I mean, I own a bed and breakfast and when I come, I'm not planning to sell it, but at some point I might. And by gosh, I want to be able to sell it as a rental property. I mean, my goodness, I've made a living, I'm going to make a living on owning that property. So I have, I feel like I have every right to sell it as a business. And those, I mean, I don't know, that's scary to me when it says, okay, I give up my, the fact that my house is a, it is built as a bed and breakfast with private bathrooms in every bedroom. And now you have to wait two, three, five years before you're going to start running this business if I were to sell it. So, or if I were to pass it on to my child or my kid or something that grows up, they, they have to wait in order to, if they buy it from me. So I think that is a problem to me.
I think I just kind of want to bring in, you know, the perspective of a young family trying to establish roots here in Seward. Yeah, and all of our, our whole houses are being rented out as Airbnbs and shut down in the winter. It makes it really difficult for a family to move here and obtain a property. I grew up in Seward, I have two small children. I also own a short-term rental. I'm fortunate enough that I was able to come across that property before things got too crazy here in Seward. But if I would have been told that I couldn't operate an Airbnb or a short-term rental there for the first two, three, five years, I would have not been able to purchase that property. So I am not in favor of that myself personally, but I do, I don't know, I guess it's just a hard one. I definitely would like to also see if I were to ever sell my property, that the potential buyer could also utilize that income to be able to live there. Yeah, I think it's more so on maybe like the whole houses, I think, where I have my majority of my concern. I also have some long-term properties. They're smaller studio properties that I rent out on a year lease. I have lots of couples move in there, they get pregnant, they're like, where do I go? And they leave town. And that's really difficult on our community. It's affecting our schools. And it's affecting just our quality of life as year-round residents here. So I am happy that you all are taking this problem off. So I'm happy to listen and put it in the census as a whole.
So, yeah, and I want, so here's, and I just want to address that if I can, if I'm sure. The, the problem, like, the tension that we're in with the permit is that we also don't want this to become like a side commodity, like they did with Halibut permits, where they put this out there and there were a couple thousand dollars and they limited and they capped them. And then they became a side commodity. So now people who want to get in the Halibut, you have to be a millionaire to even be, get in the Halibut game now. And so we don't want that to become another thing where like your short-term rental permit is like a commodity that's traded on top of your house. And so then it's like, you need to pay another $150,000 because this comes with the permit. And that, that makes that even more out of reach. And so we, so the intent is not to devalue your property or to regulate like over, that way. It's just, we, we just don't want this to be like another game that gets tangled up so that people can't afford it. Or only the people that have a lot of extra cash. that have a lot of extra cash can. We do want this to be like a starter family, friendly place. And Casey's right, like, the schools are hurting so bad right now because they can hire all the teachers in the world, but they went like 10 positions open this year, but no one can find a place to live. Or they can't find one that they can afford. And so that's kind of, anyway, I just, Susan, I just wanted to address, like, we're not trying to, like, I totally get that. We're just putting stuff on paper so that we can have a conversation around these things.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So one thought I have, when I listened to the last talk, I mean, I don't know if it was the last one, I think it might have been online. I kept hearing this, this topic come up that there's, and it is accurate, that there's no rentals in town. There's no rentals downtown. We don't have any houses for sale in town. Well, people don't have to live in town. They can live out of town. So I don't feel that as, I know there's no houses out of town. So we need to build houses. There's got to be more building going on. But the thought that newcomers or teachers or, you know, people that are taking, because I've talked to them and meet them too, in hot times when I was with my grandkids, I talked to several professional women there, and they're all going, yeah, we cannot find a house. We're gonna have to move. And they have jobs and they can't find houses. But what I, my point that I'm trying to make is that they have cars, they can drive in. So we don't have to feel that we have to solve this housing issue in the downtown area to get them a home. They need a home within distance of Seward. Yeah, they do. My son lives 10 minutes out, you know, Stony Creek area. And there's lots, there's places, we've gotta get houses built. And so that's my two cents on that. I just kept hearing in the last one, no houses downtown, no houses. Yeah, but we have land. We need to build houses.
And we're in conversations with the borough, and there's not a lot of available land outside for development. And the tough thing for us as the city is that we have zero jurisdiction outside of city limits of, of dealing with that. We're having conversations. We meet with the land manager pre-regularly. And we are trying to develop what land we can out there. But the tough thing is, is like, we don't have any.
And I knew there was the discussion about moving, opening up those lots for the city works. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, it's originally everything we possibly can are to open up lots. We're having conversations outside as well. So we're actively involved in all of that, but none of it's gonna come like very quickly. It's gonna be slow, steady, like, hard work to make kind of gains in those areas. So.
Chrissy?
Just from my experience on council, you know, we just went through an administration that was not willing to help extend utilities. They weren't willing to open up land. They weren't willing to sell anything. We're in a whole new place right now. This administration that we have is so proactive, so solution-based. We have, but we've only been here for a year and a half. We haven't been here long enough to be able to see the ripple effect of what's about ready to happen. City Shop's sitting on 31 lots. There's no reason why, when you guys move City Shop, it's zoned to auto commercial. It would be a shame to see auto commercial be restricted. You just rezone it to R1 and say, there's no rentals there. There you go. Now you have 31 homes. So now you're 85 permits. You just solved 31 of those issues. So now you're back down to essentially having 50 permits. Then you open Forest Acres Campground and turn that into another 48 lots. Now we have 71 single-family homes. And I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what's gonna happen with interest rates. You know, the price of product is really high to build. That's a whole nother thing.
Huge.
But it's going to ripple on all of us as well. When people can't afford to travel anymore, we're gonna be hurting too. So it's not really the time to take the daggers and we do, okay, now we're gonna solve problems by holding you guys back so that we have enough time to solve our own issues that should have been solved, in my opinion, 10 years ago.
And I will also speak to the lot thing. I mean, we, I own a lot downtown, and we haven't built a house on it because we have to put in all of the electric and all of the plumbing, sewage to connect to it. And it's over a hundred grand for us to even start to build anything. So we've scrapped it. We're sitting on an empty lot. Nobody can build on it.
Yeah, it's a sort of a no-win situation for a lot of folks because of the prices of everything. I don't know, you know, when and if things come back down. But it's not the intent of, of the group here to just focus on downtown. Because when we have done this, looked at sort of this, had some discussions before, it's, you know, inside, outside of town or whatever. I mean, downtown is its own critter, so to speak. And, you know, it expand, there's, there's property that's expansing, you know, expanded around, you know, the, around town. You know, I agree, you know, if we can get a developer to come in to do something like that, but, you know, that's, but that's, you know, that's business. That's, that's, you know, that's, you know, the city's not in the build, is not in the building business, so to speak. You know, so we hope that there will be a developer that will, you know, find some land that's attractive and be willing to unfortunately spend the big bucks now because building now is really expensive, you know, at least get the ball rolling. And so you can see there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel for these folks. Because, you know, housing will happen. It's just, you wanna be able to provide it for people who are young couples and, you know, people that just wanna be in town. And not everybody can afford, you know, a $500, $600,000 home because pretty soon you'll have just, you know, we'll have homes here in Seward that are from wealthy people in Anchorage who come on vacation down here. And that's problematic too. And that runs people out of town. So we're trying to do the best, satisfy the B&amp;B industry or the, you know, the lodging industry in their stuff, but also try to be able to help the folks that are actually having to try to live here year-round as well. And it seems that there's a bit of an overlap, as you've sort of brought up. You know, there's people that are here long-term, but they also wanna get into the lodging industry to some extent. And maybe the caps aren't the best way to look at it at this point, you know, because it's really easy to just say, we're gonna cap it and that's it. But you know, all these variables that you're bringing up are things that we have to consider. Yes, ma'am?
Another thought too, when we're considering caps on things, where do you start capping us businesses on short-term vacation, rental business? Do I consider cracking down personal legal vacation rentals? Because for the folks like me who have been legal for the last one year, I feel like I'm carrying those people on my back.
Yeah, there's a lot.
And before you limit other people, you should shut them down.
And I think they have the, you know, Jason could probably talk to that.
We actually have very high compliance. There are, we do know a few people that are legally operating. But I would say, overall, from all the work we've done, we actually have very high compliance, which I think speaks pretty highly to a lot of, we have over 95% compliance. And, and, yeah, which, which is really good. I mean, we have some people that, and it seems like everyone knows who the people are. And we have some people that are, you know, either haven't registered or don't have their business. They have kind of two types of compliance. We have people that aren't registered with their business license, short-term rental permits, all the paperwork. And then we have people that are using their, their property improperly, not according to code. And so we have two types of compliance that we monitor. But overall, I would say that even looking back kind of historically, we've, we have some, of course, you're always gonna have people that don't. But we actually have had historically even, I think we've gotten better at compliance, put it that way. But right now, we have a fairly high level of compliance, which I do, I think speaks very highly of the industry.
Okay. Well, I think, unless anybody has anything else to say about this part, we may wanna move to the next one because it looks like we're, you know, how many pyramids should the city allow? Where I think we're not even gonna look at that at this point, given the, the other, you know, points that are brought up. The other one is what types of short-term rentals should be capped. And I think that falls into that as well. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason.
Well, but just, before we kind of move on from that, I do wanna just make sure I understand, like, what we're really, what I'm hearing is that resident-centric and resident-favored. And, and really, like, obviously zoning is kind of, how we attack certain things with zones is a big piece of it. But anyway, what I'm hearing is that if you're a resident, you're kind of, or if you're a non-resident, or we can determine kind of what those things are. Because I do wanna, I know there are people like Mr. LaBreck who have made great investments in their property. And so I wanna make sure we're kind of not, I don't know what you call it, but, but I do wanna, so what I'm hearing though is we have very resident-centric regulation where that's a lot more open. And if, even if you were just to move here, you automatically could get a short-term rental permit, especially if it's in your residence, to survive. Those types of scenarios are, I guess, and then.
I think that's a good summary.
Yeah. And then, and then we're kind of, the other type of regulation that might, we look at, might be more a little bit heavy, is outside regulation of possible like land speculation or even shutting that completely down or, or grandfathering what we have and looking at it that way, anyway. Is that, would that be kind of a good summary of?
I think that's fair. I'm not sure what you, you know, other than the speculation that where people just comes in from another state wants to swoop in and take a bunch of stuff up.
Yeah.
I guess that's basically, you know, the, the definition at this point.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I just, so that we can bring something back to you.
Okay.
I just wanna be kind of, make sure, make sure I have a good summary of that.
Commissioner, does anybody have anything to consider?
It just made me wonder, how would we stop them from buying and renting it out?
Probably illegally.
You just can't have, you just can't have a permit if you're not from.
So they don't have a permit? What stops them from doing it though?
Uh, we, we track that a lot. We track that very early. We have letters out right now. We have attorneys writing letters. We have fines. We have all kinds, we have a system that we're making stronger right now. So.
So the fine schedules is in the works?
Yeah. Yeah, we've been crafting some stuff. And it's not just, it's really like compliance on all kinds of things that we need to just work, do a better job on. Yeah.
So I have a question. Am I hearing that you're kind of backing away from the idea of limited permits? Or is there still a category where you're thinking limited permits are still a possibility?
No, we're not, not limiting the permits. That was just discussion. But that wasn't something that we were going to focus specifically on. We needed to have a discussion. Right now, it is, you know, focusing on maybe tightening up the permitting to some extent for who's in there, if we're saying Seward-centric.
Yeah.
And that kind of thing. So it seems that, based on the discussion here, and this is obviously a very short discussion that we've had, that just capping it is very simple, but it's probably not in the best interest of everybody.
Because I just thought of one more scenario on that. That say, you have a piece of property and you aren't running a bed and breakfast, but at some point in your life or your children's life that maybe you pass it on to or something, they wanna build a, a piece on their, on that property. Do they have to wait for a permit to open up? Is, is, I don't like that permit thing, but.
Well, I guess the point is, I mean, if it's your children, there's gonna probably be 16 different planning and zoning commissions at that time. And there'll be, the regulations probably will have changed. I'm assuming, you know, and what, you know, things are fairly fluid based on the needs of the, of the community. Again, you need to make sure that you keep the, according to the comprehensive plan, that, you know, we're still keeping the old feel. You still have the doubt, you know, that a, you know, an old, small-town feel, the historic part, and be able to support the tourism part. You know, it's probably an ongoing, you know, ongoing balancing act. Who knows, 15, you know, 10 years, maybe tourism's dead and there's something else that, you know, pops up. So I, I think what you're looking for is a guarantee that your grandchildren will have the opportunity. That's what it sounds like. Yeah.
I don't know. I just wanna be, I just, the thought of having so many permits out there and you can only have your business on your zone, on your zoned property if a permit opens up and then you're able to do it. To me, if you bought a piece of property or have a piece of property that is zoned commercial or semi-commercial, I don't know. I don't like the idea that you have to wait for a permit to come in to play. So. I mean, whether it's my kids or somebody else, I'm, I'm just saying, it's just, it seems like a logic thing that doesn't feel right.
Right. And I totally agree with what you're saying. But, you know, as far as saying you want us to definitively say, we're not gonna limit permits, or we're not, yeah, that's what you're looking for.
We're not at that point yet. Yeah.
Yeah, we're not.
We're trying to figure it out. I get that. I'm just posting.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. So I guess, given that, and again, based on the number of operational history, the short-term rentals should be capped. Obviously, we've, you know, the, there's a lot of this throws it into, you know, we're gonna have to have a continuing discussion on that. Again, you know, it says here, should certain regulations favor Seward residents? That's, clearly you've done that. So we've, you know, already brought that on here. The next thing that I think we could look at, and if I haven't completely exhausted the previous one with our discussion, this is definition revisions. How should we distinguish between a small hotel and a large hotel? You have here, there's five properties that are listed as hotel motel that have six or more rooms, but for all intent, they're not hotels. So are they not, are they not met to code hotel?
We currently operate, you wanna talk to this one?
Um.
So right now, we currently define hotel by a fire code definition.
Right.
Which sometimes does not fit in because we look at a place, you're like, that's, that's a hotel? Wait. And so we just, we were looking at that because sometimes we're looking at permit, at permits and what's considered a hotel. Are they centrally staffed, not centrally staffed? But fire code just looks at if you have six or more rooms in a building, you're a hotel. And we didn't feel like maybe that's the best thing for looking at those as like short-term rental permits is by fire code because then that, they have to jump up to a really high standard as far as, you know, extinguishing systems and all that kind of stuff. And so that's, that's a little bit of a, except if I look at places, I look at places, I know they're not technically hotel by the way we would look at them. But we define them hotel because we use fire code. And so I didn't know if there was a thoughts on, on looking at, kind of having like a large hotel, which we would think of as like, we basically wanna separate the properties out, but the fire code is gonna define as hotels. But ones like Harbor 360, or Gateway, or Breeze, those are, would be considered like large hotels. But then for us, and like language regulation, consider something like a small hotel where it's defined by fire code as a hotel, but one that we are not going to like, you know, one that, like, I don't necessarily think, when I look at that place, I don't necessarily think is a hotel. But we are, some, some way to break those things apart a little bit.
I think, I figure life safety would dictate, you know, I don't think we have, we can escape life safety requirements.
No, no. And it wouldn't, they wouldn't escape life safety requirements, but it would just allow them to, allow us to look at them a little bit differently for regulations because, like, we don't, like, Gateway, we don't really look at as a short-term rental permit.
Okay.
So I have to give the scenario of my aunt and uncle when they had the liquor store and come liquor store, and they wanted to turn it into a hotel. And the building permits and the code that they followed was commercial code. And they paid a lot more money than if they would have made it into a short-term lodging. And the difference of a fire inspection for a hotel is way easier. The permitting process is way easier. Everything, if you're a hotel, it's way easier. Because I have a five-room hotel that I manage for my aunt and uncle. And that whole thing is a cakewalk. My short-term lodging permit is horrendous. And so I don't wanna see my little five-room hotel be categorized as short-term lodging and have one more horrendous application with horrendous fees and horrendous, the list goes on of all the reasons why we're trying to de-incentivize short-term lodging that, mind you, has only been happening in the last three years, to happen to these people that did everything that they were supposed to do to make their five little tiny place a hotel. They followed all the rules. And I don't think it's a good idea to change it. I don't even know that you can, really. I don't think you can take away the hotel and make them short-term lodging legally. That might be something I don't agree with.
No, that's why we call them small hotels, large hotels. They'd still be considered hotel overall.
But then the little people have to go through the horrendous inspections.
And, yeah, when that's, we know that that is the, well, one is the, the application is improving. And it is, you're right, we have a lot of work to do on that. And it is bad.
Why is there such a difference? I guess is my concern. I mean, if you have a large hotel and all the rest of that stuff, and it's, it's so streamlined, but yet the smaller ones, and this is just news to me, I, I don't know, you know, why, why, why is there such a difference? a difference?
Because they have to do, basically like if you have an entity and you have, you have to do one for each and every one, where like you have a hotel and they just do one and it covers their whole hotel and all their rooms. And we have a setup now too where you have to fill out individual forms for each one. They're not very friendly. They're, we've, we've made some great leaps and we're going to continue to make great leaps to make those very easy and so that they can just fill them out and they'll hold. And they could even carry, we're looking at carrying those over so you don't have to refill up this giant beast every year, that type of thing. So it is, yeah, she, it's correct.
It's counterintuitive to me.
Yeah, she is, she's really correct on that and we are, that's something that we are working on because we want it to be really easy for you guys, and so.
So, just for everyone else in the room, the difference of when I get my business license for my hotel, that's all I do. And they show up and they go through my rooms and they look for my fire extinguisher, my CO2 detector, my smoke detector, and that's it. Before that, it was only three years ago that I even had to have that inspection. And it was because I started throwing a fit, saying, "Why are you inspecting the whatever blank out of short-term lodging?" And here's my hotel sitting here just getting a business license and I'm just getting through, floating through. And then that's when I started getting inspe, I opened my big mouth and then I had to get inspections on my little hotel. But it's just, I think there's been, again, in past administration, a real drive to just de-incentivize or make short-term lodging challenging enough that people may not want to do it anymore. I'm not sure. But it is a very, like, we, the process keeps on changing and it's because everyone's getting organized. And there's a whole thing with the clerk and the fire department. And I know it's been everyone trying to get on the same page, but hotels don't really have to do anything.
Okay. Thanks for that. I had no clue. Okay.
We're working on it.
Okay. Well, simplifying and making it a lot easier for everybody, for you two, you guys too.
Can I, can I ask her a question?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Is your, would you consider your small, your hotel centrally staffed, your aunt and uncle's hotel?
It's unhosted, unstaffed. I mean, we're available 24/7. I just have someone call me at 12:30 in the night and ask me to come make their food on into a bed and breakfast. We're staffed, but we're not physically there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
That's sort of like some of the lower 48 motels in some respects. Hotels are fully staffed. They have amenities. But your motels where you just drive up and a lot of times there's really not somebody there full-time and you just have a phone to call if you need to, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So right, and this is where you, I think, Chrissy brought this up. You have this one bullet that you have here. It says, "Once a building rents or leaves more than five rooms a night, they are required to meet a higher standard of fire code," which makes sense. Still needs to be considered a hotel. We can create language to distinguish between small hotel and large hotel. If we do that, would that change the process for, you know, like we were just sort of discussing, streamline it? Would they mirror each other? Or how would that, how best would be that approach?
Yeah, we do, our process in general overall is to streamline the process, to make it very simple for everyone so that they can have kind of a central application that stays on file, something that they can pull over from year to year that we will have all of their documents from year to year. So that way they don't have to upload them every year.
Right.
Because that's kind of the process that's going on right now and it makes a lot, it makes it pretty difficult. So our process in general, whether it's large hotel, small hotel, bed and breakfast, is to have a very simple and streamlined experience. And if you're a person who's doing it year over year, maybe just accepting like, yeah, there are no changes. Let me, because you do have to do your life safety inspection every year.
Right.
And, you know, we just want to make a really similar streamlined experience where they can just say, "Yep, no, no changes have been made to my structure that are meaningful that would have to be re-inspected. I scheduled your life safety inspection and sign off" and that type of thing, so.
I think it'd be, if somebody's interested in that, especially if they haven't, you know, they're insured for a bed and breakfast or a, you know, small hotel or whatever. I'm sure there's insurance issues in there too that, when you renew stuff.
Yeah.
So with that, so the language suggestions that you have, it makes sense to me the way you have that. Does anybody have any other comments, concerns? Okay. Then I'll move on to definition and code. I think, when I, as I read it, it seemed like it was, it, you know, it makes, you know, it, you know, it fits the, what we're doing in some respects. I think, do we have only one motel in town? Actual motel? Is it...
No, we have a couple.
Marina?
Murphy's.
Is it Murphy's?
Yes, Murphy's Motel on there.
Yep, Murphy's and...
Yeah, I remember Nathan built that, yeah.
We stayed there when we moved here because we've been trying to house. And I've left on work for months. And that was not within the last five years. That was 13 years ago. So this has been ongoing, that families cannot move to sewer.
Yeah, it was, that was so.
It's, it's not new to this decade even.
No, no.
So.
Yeah.
Actually, I think there was something, somebody founded in 1970s or something.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven thing, so it's been, yeah.
We're trying to do something about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we're good with the, I think we're good with the hotel motel piece if you want to move on to the permit requirements.
You know, and I thought this should insurance approve from mortgage company that SCRs or permits will be required. I, they used to be a requirement when I had a bed and breakfast. Dave Squire's required.
Yeah, it's technically a requirement, but it's not in code that we require it. And so we want to put it in code. But most, most people do provide insurance to us. Some new ones don't, but it's something that, it's really hard to enforce if it's not in code. And so that's something that we do want to put in, in...
I mean, it protects the owner and it protects everybody in town.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. And so that's something that we just, because we do, we would like to add it to code. We want to make sure we run by you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Does anybody, you have insurance for everything else? Now, I don't know, at one point in time, did this, and obviously this is historical, but the city one time required like a million dollars, a minimum of a million dollars insurance of some sort. Is that, do we put that kind of stuff in there?
I don't, I don't really know what the, I know that if you are doing activity on the, on a city facility and you provide insurance, that is the case. So if you do like a facility use form type of thing, you do have to have, provide that. But this would be more just like showing us that you do have, in fact, have homeowner's insurance that you, or not homeowner's insurance, but you have insurance for your, the business that you're running. Or that could be attached to your homeowner's insurance, that could be something else, but...
Well, it's true because a lot of insurance companies didn't, don't do that. I used to have USAA and I had to get James Wolfe, bed and breakfast insurance back in the day because USAA would not do, would not insure that.
A comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I have, you know, insurance for my bed and breakfast, but this kind of bothers me that the city would be telling me how much money I have to put into my insurance. It feels like that should be the property manager's decision.
Yeah, we wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, the way that the city made it basic, it sounds like you'd be required to have a certain amount, like a million dollars of insurance. It just doesn't seem like that should be the city's place to tell the property, how much insurance to get.
Yeah, that was just an example from, that we pulled from someone, that was actually just Washington State's example, just to see what their language was like. But yeah, that's a good point.
I wonder why other states do that? If they've, if they've found that people had inadequate insurance and got in trouble? Maybe that was just to protect them or something? Yeah, I don't, yeah. But yeah, your point's taken on that. Okay. Okay. But I think it's a good idea to have insurance. Everybody else?
Agreed.
Agreed with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you'll have to talk about fees. I'm not big into the fees, Jason. I don't know what's good, what's not good.
Well, it's, sewer's one of the, like, we're looking at different, different other places. Sewer's one of the few places that does not have any type of fee structure. I can see there's reasons for it, there's reasons not for it, or there's, you could have fee structures for different things, but we just don't have fees. And so I think when we're looking at changing regulations, it's, it's a good thing to have a discussion about.
Do we have comparables? Other places in Alaska or other places that, you know, if it's a good idea or even, you know, applicable to us, or why is it necessary?
On page 13, I think it's the...
13 on there. I missed that probably. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so there was, in that, in those examples, there's a couple of different types of approaches that people took. Just kind of a flat rate where you just pay a fee every year, no matter what kind you are. Or there's ones that are kind of like you pay this much annually, then you pay this much per sleeping area. You know, and, you know, they have ones that are pretty basic, like the Salida Colorado one is pretty basic.
Yeah.
Which I think is, I did think that was kind of strange though, that they have like, if you're a new one, they charge you less than if you're at renewal. It seems like that should actually be the opposite.
Well, maybe they don't have as much money, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know.
Like all the new hiring bonuses. You know, loyal people would work their career.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
But the new hired, it's $1,000.
Right, right. Yeah, right.
Chrissy?
I would just like to see, as far as fees, I'm totally willing to pay. I, I don't mind paying, but I want the hotels to pay without paying. So if I'm going to pay by sleeping unit, I want the hotels to pay by sleeping unit. I think it's only fair. I don't understand the divide and I think, I think it's easier to leave the guys alone. But I, I really think that we need to start really encompassing these hotels into what it is that we're doing. I mean, I understand the fire code part about the designation of a hotel versus a single-family residence, right? When we converted the liquor store into a hotel, we put two layers of sheet rock on front and back of every wall. And, you know, we went through the whole crazy building code to do that. So I can kind of understand why there would be a more entailed fire inspection for a short-term lodging that wasn't built to IRC versus a hotel that was built to IRC. But when it comes to fees, why? The, the fire inspector maybe takes, you know, to go through all four of my rooms, it doesn't take him that much longer than, than to do the same thing to a hotel.
Yeah, if they don't go through, unless they just walk through the rooms, if they do that at all, yeah. So, yes, ma'am?
I, I kind of agree. I don't feel there should, I don't understand why there needs to be a fee. I don't see where the floor deck's coming from. I, I do understand why there's bed tax and we pay 11% on our total tax. But anyway, as far as a fee, I'm not sure why.
I don't know what that fee goes to cover.
Yeah, what's it covering?
What does that money that you pay as a fee do for us as business owners or the community or, I, what do we do with that money?
I think I can answer that. Just because I understand the budget process. I think the intention of the fee is because there's a whole position, well, now, just because of in the last three years, this beast that we've created, of these very stringent inspections, now we've created a city position issue that needs to be funded. But these fees, there's no way they're going to even remotely begin to cover what we've created.
They don't need to, they don't need to cover all of it, but it does help to cover some of it, especially as we get more into compliance and some of those, for doing a better job of enforcement. Because we honestly don't have like, we can, they're doing the best we can, but we do not have a lot of time to do, go into those things or to do some of that stuff. But it does, it does help. The city's not making any money off of any of this and we're investing millions of dollars in infrastructure and utilities and all that kind of stuff. And so it, it's not like we're, we're just like, "Hey, let's go out for a nice dinner tonight" type of thing. You know, it's weird. This is getting turned back into being useful things for the community, so. Helping fund, not even close to doing anything.
I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, we'd need both those building inspectors because we're going to open up so much land and there's going to be so much development. We're going to totally utilize both those positions. But right now, I think they're very possibly, I don't know, I don't want to offend anybody, but maybe a little underutilized just because our building, when we created that position, there was a lot of development. But now with price of material and everything, I think it's declined, but I don't know.
Well, I know it winds up being, you know, it covers, you know, positions and things like this. And it's an awful lot more work, it seems, than it used to be. And I don't know if it's because of the three year, you said three years ago, you know, that it sort of blew up to very rigid regulatory stuff. Maybe that's, you know, the reasoning behind that. I don't know. Well, I guess we'd have to take a look at that, Jason, to see what, I don't know, you know, what that reflects back on in certain areas.
$100 and $250 doesn't seem that unreasonable for, for fees.
What is that, per room? The room is $100 for each room?
I think, yeah, it was more like, looking like, we, our idea was like, if you have, if you're just doing a traditional bed and breakfast, you're going to have something that's kind of minimal. If you have like, kind of like, if you're renting out like a whole house, or, you know, we're trying to kind of create these windows of like, where does this make sense to pay this fee? And if you have like this, where does it make sense to pay this? So we're trying to create kind of like buckets that make sense, that was based on like your kind of income a little bit and size of operation. So just kind of a simple structure.
I'm just trying to wrap, I'm trying to wrap my head around why we're going to charge them a fee to be compliant.
It's, it's not charging them a fee to be compliant, it's just charging them a fee to help...
And what's the tax for?
Yeah, what's the tax for?
I kind of feel like, well, I'm going to, I'm going to rip my room out and I'm going to give you guys 11% of my taxes of what I made off that so that you guys can work in to paying the guy that's coming here and inspecting to make sure it's safe and go in for everything else for all of us here.
Well, they, if you look at the tax breakdown, 4% is the bed tax. Two of that, half of that goes to the chamber. Half of that, which is not that much money, it's like 400,000, $300,000 a year goes to pay for help, contribute to like city infrastructure, which we'd even pay for like a couple hundred yards of sewage replacement.
But then that's our sewer bill.
What's that?
But then that's where our sewer bill goes. I'm new to this stuff, so.
Right, right.
If it goes wrong, we pay for the safety inspection, too.
No, you don't. It's free.
I pay, uh, the receipt.
No, I know they're not, they're not. That's been free for the last couple of years.
Should get the fire?
Mm-hmm.
No, I paid for my, I can, I can show you receipt.
Well, they haven't paid this since I've been here. They have not been paying, so.
Chrissy?
So, back to the, I mean, there's, there's other ways to adjust this. The fees, I think, just have been waived because of COVID. Well, that's why it was first waived. And then, I don't know why it was waived this year, but thank you. The other thing about the bed tax is, you know, we, if you guys, it would be really cool if you could give all the commissioners a printout of how much the chamber has been getting every year. And it is like, whoa, they're still getting 50%. Maybe you cap that and maybe you can help subsidize the fees that you need to get from us to pay for that extra position and maybe some of what you're getting. You'd probably make more money on capping the chamber than charging us fees. It's just an idea.
And I, I want to go back because the application can be waived after COVID, but we...
We wrote a check to the man who came and inspected our unit.
We did pay for an inspection.
And he handed us the receipt.
Well, I know that just last year they didn't though. They shouldn't have since January. So, because I know they were told they're not charging because it was actually too complex of a system to try and figure out how many minutes they were in your house and to different things like that, so I know.
I'll give you the...
The receipt.
Okay.
That's interesting. I wrote out a check to the guy that was at my house too. I wonder what I wrote the check for.
In twenty twenty-two, in twenty twenty-two you did?
I wrote out a check in front of him and gave him the check. I'll have to go.
From the fire department.
And see, yeah, it was the fire.
Interesting, 'cause we were told they were not charging for fire inspection.
Well, I did, I did get charged, but after he came, he did give me like a copy of like, check your fire extinguisher and stuff that wasn't like.
I know, I, I paid the check while I was standing here.
Well, I think what you guys may want to do is just talk to the fire department, and we'll, we'll get ourselves squared away and we'll move on.
Right, and I do wanna make sure that too, that the bed tax isn't a tax you guys are paying, it's a tax you guys are collecting. It's not like you guys aren't paying that, and so, and that does, like the chamber, I would say, having worked there before, it does, I mean, they do a lot of work, and a lot of their money goes to staffing, and they have a lot of staff that are down at the cruise ship terminal, they're trying to push people into town, and at the visitor's center, and so a lot, I know their budget.
No, and the chamber does, they've got a wonderful form they send out for bed and breakfasts to fill their rooms, I mean, they're definitely working.
The chamber's definitely grown from over the years.
Yeah.
When it was just one semi-paid person, chamber director and a bunch of volunteers, to now it's much bigger, and that's probably why they, you know. 'Cause when the bed tax was first instituted, that's when they, back in nineties something, that's when they started helping to fund the chamber.
Yeah.
I do agree with Chrissy that, you know, we can't be separated and treated differently from other ninety rentals, and if that's the hotels, then, you know.
So the hotels don't get charged a, any, any sort of fee or permitting on that? Is there a reason behind the hotels having, you know, you know, this, for lack of a better term, sort of a carte blanche of, of stuff in the B and Bs or the lodging industries? I just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the, the logic behind that.
Is there anyone here representing a hotel?
I mean, it's tiny, but I think, go back to the fee that the short-term lodging are paying is because the short-term lodging are the only ones that have fireperson coming into their place and checking off all the things, whereas up until when I started barking, I don't think they were doing any of that for hotels at all. So if you were a hotel, you didn't have to get your fire extinguishers checked, you didn't have to get your sprinkler system inspected, you didn't have to do anything. They just started doing that to hotels, so now we're kind of on the same page. So the fee should be on the same page, and I'm sorry, I'm not a hotel.
But that sounds fair, actually. You know, 'cause if they're going and doing the same inspections in a hotel, as in the other places, there should be, you know, maybe it's.
They may have other requirements too that we don't have, so we need to.
We'd have to probably just take a look and analyze that, maybe a graduated, if we choose to do that, a graduated.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, sorry, I don't know, I haven't been here long enough to know the history of the difference between the two.
Yeah, I don't know, and that's why I'm asking stupid questions myself.
Yeah, so, and I think it's a good time if we're, as we're digging into stuff, like, let's continue to make the system better, so.
So I think, what restrictions should be placed on the short-term rental permit? If the permit does not stay with the property, if the property, that's the one that you had brought up earlier, if an individual sells their property, they lose the permit. If like, if it stays within the, you know, and I, I understand that, because if you developed your property to be a certain functioning lodging establishment, that it might hamper the ability to even sell it, if it's structured or built a certain way.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we just need to figure out a way so that it doesn't become a commodity, that's like, like a halibut, commercial halibut permit. So that way, it's not, it doesn't create its own economic system in and of itself. So that way, I mean, it could go with your property as your investment, but it has to have a check so that people, it's not this extra, I can charge a hundred fifty thousand dollars more for this permit type of, which is the way the commercial halibut permit is turned into.
If you don't cap them, then you don't even have to have this discussion. And so, when I first heard that they were capped, and I was like, this is gonna come before me at council, I can't vote, but I'll make myself so rich. You know, like, exactly what Jason just said. Talk about a conflict of interest, like, they're gonna become liquor licensed. And then the other, the other thing that's very concerning to me is, you know, but again, we have a really great administration, in my opinion, but let's say we have a different kind of administration, and you're the guy that they decide that they don't like, and you have some major trauma happen in your life, and you are late getting your application filled in, and oh, you lost your permit, sorry. You know, there's no, read the code, it says right here, you're screwed, 'cause we don't like you. So I just think the whole thing is a terrible idea, I think, I can see. So I understand why you guys are doing this, for the land speculators, I'm a real estate agent, I get them, they call me all the time. Personally, I have my way with determent.
That's why you always call, thanks.
But I, I just think like, it's like, kind of how all government works, right? You make a rule for this, and then you gotta make ten more rules, because you didn't think of all of these scenarios that were, you were sharing with you. And then you make ten more rules, and then you gotta make ten more rules, and then all of a sudden, you've got a whole bunch of rules.
That's why government moves slow, so you can consider everything. It's painfully slow, but sometimes it gives people a different perspective. Yeah, and that's, that is sort of hard, because, you know, a lot of times, if it's your personal property, you should be able to sell it to whomever you want to. But, again, the, the speculators doesn't protect town, so I guess we'd have to take a look and see what, you know, where you go with that. But that does still affect somebody who, if the only person that's gonna sell, you know, buy your home at whatever price you're gonna, you know, sell it for, is somebody from out of, out of the, out of the area, then it's, it's problematic, you know. We'll have to mold that again.
Yeah.
Utility fees. Oh, that's for people who leave town and then shut everything off and then.
Yeah, we were just looking at some other ways that are, could help create small hurdles to kind of deter some types of land speculation. And, 'cause what happens is residences somewhat carry, people that are year-round residents kind of carry some of the burden for that. And so I think if we continue to put the burden on people that are doing the box at my house for nine months a year type of thing, some thoughts around those pieces, so that way it's, anyway, so we did find just some of those, the utility fees, pieces, that the on and off rates and base rates for houses.
So it costs them like, for example, water, a hundred seventy-five to turn it off, and then, then turn it back on, so it's, those are, are those the existing ones, or is that recommendations?
Yeah, but those are, those are current, current ones. So, but that was just another item of discussion of something, something else that we could look at. Because we do want this to be kind of a resident, resident-friendly as much as possible, and so, and then the other one down below was just looking at taxes. Non-primary residences, or, I guess there's ways that you can't, you can allow residents to opt out of certain taxes and that type of thing, that's, we saw that too, where they'll charge a tax, but then residents can opt out.
So you mentioned a little bit on, about that the residents that are here year-round absorb the burden of the people that are not here year-round. What, is that because they're, the taxes aren't being collected during the timeframe, like for all our utility bills and stuff like this? So is that part of that? Is that what you're referring to, or?
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, a lot of like the, they're not, because especially like with water, where there's no like base rate usage, usage fee. Normally, like if they had a base rate usage fee, that they'd be paying into the system, which helps kind of pay into the pool that everyone pays from. And so if, on that type of thing, like if we would just say, okay, we wanna have a, what, even if your water's off, you're still gonna pay like a base rate usage fee. So that way, you're still paying into the system to maintain the water system, even though yours may be off, you're still helping put money into the pool. That way, it's taking some burden off of residences, that they're paying in to maintain that pool, that that person gets the check out of by not paying into that base rate type of thing. And so, I think looking at, even if like the, like they do with sewer, or those types of things, like looking at increasing base rate fees, whether it's power, water, sewer, you know, you can't really turn off your sewer, it's just there, right? But I do think, looking at increasing base rate usage fees, especially if they're gone for eight months, that means those people will be paying into the system, or paying a greater rate into the system. What might be, might be helpful, and then, and that's a beneficial thing to residences.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, the, you know, and if you explain that to people who are just, you know, vacation property people here, they might, you know, appreciate that, I guess, a little, little more, 'cause everybody else is observing there. You know, they have to keep the taxes or going, or the usage on those things, because, you know, sooner or later, they have to get a base amount of money in here for the, for all those utilities, and if everybody's gone, then the rest of us who.
Yeah, no, a hundred, yeah, a hundred percent, and so, so that's one of those things where we could look at, recommend to council, like, looking at a base rate increase, or just even introducing a base rate for water, so.
I have just some history. We have a summer rate and a winter rate for electricity. That was created for the same thing, to try to, because there's more users in the summer, to supplement the people that, it was almost like a small business, keep your doors open in the winters, stay here in the winter because it's more affordable. It kind of worked out, but it kind of didn't. I guess, apparently, you didn't make any more money, everything stayed the same. That same time, we did also do a base rate. I feel better about making a base rate for everyone, not just looking at short-term lodging again. It is already in our code, I believe, and you guys might wanna look into this, when you turn your water off, your sewer gets turned off too, which is three hundred and sixty dollars. Plus, and do the math, it's sixty-eight dollars a month for your sewer, forty-seven dollars a month for your water. So you have to shut your water off for more than six months to make it worth your while, and that was the whole reason that council implemented that, to make people stop turning it off. Because before we had that, you could turn it off for like three or four months, and then turn it back on and save money. There's no savings unless you're turning it off for a really long time now.
Okay. Is there, I mean, I don't know if it would help with any of this stuff, there used to be a peak usage during the day. You know, water, you know, whether it's hotels, or whether it's, you know, the big hotels, or whether it's the, you use water or, you know, power or whatever, there's, you know, it's a different rate based on the utilization. I know, again, I'm reflecting back to New York, and people would do things when it was the water rate or the electrical rate was lower during the day. So people would do certain things, 'cause they'd have set times where rates were different, which is, I have no idea how they manage that, but, you know, people would, would go and try to do those things. I don't know if that's something that can even be done here, or if it'd be workable, but that's the kind of thing that is another consideration.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's a good consideration, I think too, we'll, I think they're in the process of really cleaning up the, the power structures anyway. They're in the middle of kind of that forensic audit, really kind of looking at how they can get that system cleaned up, and so that might be, we can tackle that on the end of that one.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna do it. I guess I'll then move on to the next one. Is for the taxes. Where'd it go? I lost my thing. It says, has to put a tax on non-primary residences, investment properties. Vancouver, B C does a three percent on homes, it says taxable value for a home that is not a principal residence. So you would have a non-resident, non-resident owner tax?
Yeah, those are just some other pieces that, if you looked at what people were doing to try and take different approaches. You know, I mean, if you have like a non-resident tax, I think that the only way that they said that they, you know, I was just putting those out there, but looking at, again, ways that we can, making sure that residents are not that people that are land speculating and sewer, at least carrying a little bit more burden than kind of year-round type of.
Well, it's sort of like letting somebody drive your car all the time, that, that doesn't own it, and there's still wear and tear, there's still all this other stuff. The town is getting a lot of wear and tear from all these people cruising, which is great, they bring stuff in for, you know, that brings in a certain amount of funding for people that are running, are in the tourism industry, but the, the infrastructure and just, you know, the sidewalks, the streets, everything else is getting beat up with everybody coming through.
Yeah.
I don't know. I wouldn't wanna throw it on the tourists, but necessarily, you know, with that respect, but, you know, you know, the non-residents that have homes here, and, but then nothing, they don't wind up paying additional stuff for any of this, anything that they have here, so. I don't know.
About incentivizing year-round rentals. I know I have a second home that's rented out year-round, you know, kind of tax break would be cool, obviously I'm on grandfathered in, so whatever, but, you know. It's the way you should not do your nightly, I don't know.
What would be ways that you could, what would be an incentive to, do you think, for?
Yeah, so I don't know, if there could be like that tax credit, like for being the first time home buyer, you get that fifty thousand dollar tax credit, if that is possible. No, it's a borough, so, how that would work, or, yeah.
Yes ma'am? Did you stand something? I thought you were raising your hands.
But that's my feeling too, is we, I keep hearing the incentivized, and, and, and it's incentivized to do some of these things, to make something work.
I know the state. I know the state.
That's in my opinion, and I don't have the intention of the tax breaks always coming up, you know, and I say, no, I'm a citizen, it's kind of whatever. The incentives.
I know the state, the state does some things at times, you know, uh, people that work in law enforcement or probation or some of these other ones, and they move into some of the, the less desirable neighborhoods in Anchorage, they got a huge, uh, um, benefit on as far as, uh, uh, you know, I think, we think like forty, fifty thousand dollars toward the home, plus a much lower, uh, um, interest rate on the loans and things like this. I don't know if that's the same kind of thing, but, you know, we, we have no control over that, I don't think too much, but, but I don't know what the city could do as far as, you know, whether it is the taxes or the, you know, lower taxes for some of the folks, you know, things like, you know, you have seniors that don't pay, uh, borough tax, I think, up to, what is it? Seven hundred and fifty thousand or something along those lines, I forget what it is, but it's, uh, you know, the city, the city grants you, uh, a, a tax holiday up to a hundred and fifty thousand if you're a, um, you know, firefighter or ambulance guy or disabled or something like that. That might help people somewhere along the line too. I mean, our taxes, you know, property taxes aren't that bad here actually, I don't think so.
No.
Yeah, I don't know, some kind of kickback.
I think.
I'm not sure how it's structured.
And I, I think it ties in here, there's a, a article in the Daily News, the Daily, about private industries taking on this issue themselves, trying to solve the problem, Alie's building housing, um, and it talks about, and we have companies here that do that, that provide housing, but some of, a lot of it seems like it's coming on the small business owner right now to help solve this problem. Whereas, for the people that need it, the school district obviously needs help, but they've also got some funding, and there's other school districts that do.
Right, yes.
And there's, and we do have businesses in town that have secured housing problems, have some housing that they've got secured. Other businesses do, and if we can put some emphasis on.
I think in the Bush, they did that too, I think they provide teacher housing and trooper housing in the Bush.
I totally agree, I feel like there's some of these big companies, the Sea Life Center, the Anthony Warren Stores, and big hotels, all these big businesses that have lots of employees, and their problem right now is where to put their employees. Instead of putting it on the small businesses to solve that, they should purchase some land or purchase some buildings and provide, and provide housing. I worked for a forest service for years and they provided housing because they're, you know, like out in the suburbs, there is no place for people to stay. So they had to, and it worked great, rather than them depending on the community to provide that funding.
And we have a lot of, a lot of businesses now that do provide their own housing, I mean, that, that's done significantly across the board.
And that's just for what, so, boys and family housing.
Yeah, but the problem is, is that we are like, um, Rissy was right, like, we are ten years behind and it is so bad, like we are in a hole that I don't know if we're going to like, get out, I mean, it is going to be, it's going to run to fight tooth and nail for a number of years to get out of this hole, because we are, I think we're salable, but like it is, um, the school, like our school populations are like in a nosedive, which is like a, you know, that's not helpful. Um, we need to get the school populations turned back around so we can increase our funding, which is the only way you do that is by building more housing. But then it's like, we don't have a lot of land, and so we're kind of in this place where we do have to, um, I would agree, like it should be on private industry, but I don't see private, like, and we're not trying to saddle you guys on with this, we're really just trying to protect land speculation, which is rampant right now. And if you look at what's going on in the community, like there's been communities like on the Oregon coast or in the mountains of Colorado that have completely lost control, they basically have, there's corporations that now control their, what goes on in their community, cause they have the upper hand. And we don't want that to become here. And we do want to make sure that the money that the city is putting into infrastructure and building new houses is, um, that as many houses as, like, of course, some people are going to buy those for vacation rentals because they can, we live in a free country and people can buy what they want, but we also don't, we also want to put things in place that are, we want, we value, you, we value greatly short-term rentals and what, what the, the capacity they provide, but we also want to keep out that next level of land speculation in those new homes, so that we do have as many families and workers moving into those places. And so I don't, um, and so anyway, that's just, I just want to kind of reassure you, like, and I totally get what you're saying, that we're not trying to place anything on you guys, and I get why, um, why you are here, why, why all of you are here, and I really appreciate your input, because what we're trying to do is we're putting things on the map so that we can come up with the best product that will protect our community and that will ensure, so like, um, I want my kid, my kids, if they want the option to be able to buy a house here in sewer, if things are going the way they are, they will not be able to do that. And, and so, um, anyway, that's, maybe that's a selfish goal, but I think that's what everyone kind of wants, is they want, they want, our new, new young families to move here and to be able to have that option, right now they don't have that option, and we want to be able to get back to that place where we can provide that for them.
Just before, Deborah, you said you had your hand up?
Well, I just wondered, does anybody know how little things in this, um, our home renovation businesses or their employees, if there's people, if there's people with banking lodging, there's a huge number of policies out there. I grant you, anyone that has a business in this town should be supplying houses for their employees, but there's a huge number of policies in sewer that are being used for that. And again, not out there for people to rent year-round, just like vacation rentals.
That's a good point, yeah. Rissy?
Sorry, I was, I was listening to, oh, I, I think the Chamber does a really wonderful job. And I don't want to, I'm not, I don't want to stigmatize anybody and I don't want to take anything away, but I, I'm just like, listening to all these conversations and stuff. You know, I have, I've studied the budget for ten-plus years and I've been watching that pile of money grow and grow and grow, it's huge right now. And maybe just putting a cap on it that feels comfortable for the Chamber and having conversations like this, I don't know if this is even something that P and Z deals with or council, but, um, you know, making it so that once that cap, then maybe it goes to the developer reimbursement program, so that pot of money is growing, so that we're like, hey, developers, look at, we got all this money that we want to give you to make more housing. And I think that's more the mindset, like that feels so much better of a solution than just trying to shut down what's already successful. So, I don't know, that was just I'm making in my mind.
No, it makes good sense, because if, you know, the, the, the more visitors that do come, then there's more money that goes into that program or into the, you know, the, um, visitor industry stuff and fifty percent, you know, fifteen years ago, the director is not the same as fifty percent what's going now. And not saying that that would be, you know, to cut it or anything else like this, they got a great operation going, but who knows? Maybe that, you know, like you're saying, put it at a certain level that's comfortable and then divert some of those funds, because as you know, it's so expensive to put in utilities. And, you know, would that help fund the, you know, continue to fund the, the development in, um, uh, the Forest Acres? Continuing to move those utilities out and everything else like that, I don't know, so, you know. Okay, I think what we'll go on to is, I think we're, um, okay, the next bullet you had on here was increased taxes for vacant land and vacant homes. I don't know how you would do that. Unless, you know, is that a, I don't know, is that even a thing that somebody has done before or is that just an idea?
I think I could speak to this a little bit.
Okay.
This is, uh, I, I forwarded Jason something about this, um, and it's not necessarily an increase in taxes for vacant land or not necessarily an increase, not increase in taxes, it's just a redistribution of taxes, uh, to incentivize development. So instead of encouraging land speculators to hold on to vacant lots and pay very low taxes and, um, have no incentive for developer development, because there will be an increase in taxes initially when you develop that land, instead has a kind of a base tax on your land, like, land has its intrinsic value, so more of your tax base would be in the land itself based on how valuable it is and less would be in improvements to that land. Is kind of the, uh, thing, this is, this has been done, I believe, in Pittsburgh and it, uh, kind of cut down on a lot of vacant lots. And like, you know, when, when somebody doesn't have anything to do, they just turn something into a parking lot and makes them a couple of dollars, you know, pays the taxes, but this would incentivize, you know, it's not really worth it to hang on to it to do that, like, turn it into something actually useful besides a parking lot.
It's an interesting concept.
Was there, with your, uh, research on that, did you, was there any sort of, um, examples for the taxes? Or did you see anything on there or what they had used or any criteria?
Uh, yeah, like I said, part of the best case studies, I think, I think it's Pittsburgh, I have to double-check, that it's been a while since I looked into this. But it's been implemented at least there and seemed to improve things.
Incentivize development, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those things too, like these vacant lots, I mean, we still pay for the roads to go past them and everything, like there are utilities running past a lot of these lots. And, you know, as our tax base comes mostly from, uh, you know, it actually comes from our sales tax, right? Like majority of our, uh, revenue, um, so, like these vacant lots aren't really helping out at all, like, but they, they could be, and incentivized to do something with them, so.
Thanks. Okay, um, so you have here the effects of no reg, no regulation. Yeah, talked about small communities have more renters than full-time residents, if there was no regulation. PACs are setting up lodging and booking companies to battle regulation on short-term re, rentals. Yeah, and that the problem is, you have the few amenities in communities in the off-season, so basically it's so focused on one kind of, um, business or, uh, industry and then everybody's sort of left behind at the end. Let's see, housing prices and long-term rental prices increase, making it difficult for families to live into the community. Schools decline, which you brought up, um, lose capacity for all services, yeah, and we've seen it to some extent, you know, restaurants are shutting down. I know the hospitals are seeming to be going okay right now, we're, we're getting chugatchmute and a few other things, but that's doing all right. Uh, schools may be, if the kids are going away, you know, the people aren't here, then the schools will wind up shutting, yeah. Okay, you have now here, uh, short-term data in sewer?
Yeah, I think the rest of this was just kind of data to back up kind of the conversation pieces that we needed, and so, um.
You just have some demographics and who's where and stuff like that?
Yeah, the rest of it was just kind of big demographics that we provided and, and kind of to see how the, by, by zone, by type of rental, by type of lodging, building, um, we, just, yeah, there's some information on code as it currently stands for land uses allowed. Um, and just some kind of support documents if anyone else wants to go through and read that, just so they can understand where we're at.
Well, it's good information and it's like the whole house, single-family dwelling, you have, uh, a, uh, there's twenty-eight of them and, um, you possibly have twenty-eight that are not, uh, not primary residents, so the person who is, who's got the property, that's not the residence? Do they live in sewer, are they living out of sewer or?
Yeah, they're, they're living, yeah, non, non-primary residents is not their, it's not, it's not their primary residence that they're living in.
Okay, so they could be living next door or something like that?
They could be living next door, they could be living in Guam, or, I don't think we have anyone living in Guam, I know people from Guam, but I don't think they, um, I don't think they're, they don't act there, so.
Gotcha, got it, got it. All right. Yeah, this is good, because I, I hadn't seen this breakout before. Is this off the Hamari thingy that, that?
Uh, no, this is like.
Just your own tracking?
Yeah, I had to, cause Hamari provides a certain amount and then we have to like, I had to do a lot of where I actually went, looked by, take the Hamari data, break it out, go look at every single listing, go look at the zones, and because Hamari only collects a certain amount, because, like, no, there's no such thing as a comprehensive search group that does all that, what we need. And so I had to go by every, look by every listing and also too, as you look down, you're like, oh, I know that, where that house is, and I know that, that's kind of thing. And so this is, and it's not perfect, but it's really, really close. So, but yeah, just a lot of hours and hours of.
Yeah.
Going through and, and, uh, getting that broken down, so.
Okay. Well, commissioners, do you have anything else to offer, Jason, on that or?
I think that's, I mean, yeah, I think we got some good information and good, uh, feedback and input, which we really appreciate. So that way we can kind of go back and, and bring back some recommendations.
Well, that'd be good, there's a lot of good ideas, I mean, a lot of things that I hadn't heard from, you know, other people's perspective. I mean, we, we all operate in our own little bubbles, everybody else has their own ideas, and so that impacts, obviously, on the decision-making. So, anybody have anything else to offer?
I quickly want to, um, you guys briefly talked about the variables of being a resident. I've been here since ninety-five, um, my job is taking me to Anchorage, but I consider sewer to be my home. My driver's license is sewer, my life is in sewer, my job is in Anchorage. I'm there five days a week, I'm here on the weekends. So for me, it's like, well, what are you going to, how, like, there are too many variables, so how would that work out for me?
You're still a resident of sewer, right?
I'm a resident, I don't, I, sometimes I go there, sometimes I go here, uh, because sometimes I can make, I have time to do a mail-in ballot or I didn't get a mail-in ballot, so I got to register really quick, like, it's just, for me, it's like there are too many variables to be like, oh, I'm here on the weekends, am I a resident of sewer?
Well, I did the same.
I live here in the summer, I'm here all, all summer long.
Yeah, I did the same thing, I worked when I was deputy commissioner for corrections and I commuted, uh, up to Anchorage. I lived, had an apartment up in Anchorage, maintained a home up in Anchorage and everything else, but I lived in sewer and I still was considered a sewer resident.
Yeah. Maybe you could consider to, oh, that's a rest, maybe it's pretty good. Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. But, you know, I don't, it's, it's really a catch-22 and I, I've been here a long time and I, I think about all the places that I lived at. I, in ninety-five, I had a job, I had two jobs, one was in a bar, one was in a restaurant. And every bar I went to, I was like, I need a place to live, I don't have a place to live. I went into Safeway, I don't have a place to live, the cashier did not know me and he gave me a room. So this is not new, it's been going on for a very long time and it's, it, it's just not new. Like I, it, and it bothers me when people say, oh, this is a new thing, no, it's not. When I was here in ninety-five, I didn't have a place to live. When I came back in ninety-eight, I didn't have a place to live, but I always had a job. When I came back in two thousand and one, when I decided to live here permanently, I still did not have a place to live, but, uh, and I took a job with Major Marines because they, they have housing. So I did that in the morning and I bartended at night and it was like this exhausting thing, but they gave me housing because I worked for them. So it, it, it's been going on for a very long time, but I also think, I lived in the low-income housing that's over here on the corner and there's low-income housing everywhere, and in that building, when I lived there, there were many empty places in there. Why? Cause you got to make this amount of money. And yeah, I paid a little extra in the summertime because I made more money, but I also wasn't truthful about my tips. But why, but why are those places sitting empty? Pacific, whatever, over there by, uh.
Pacific Park.
Yeah, they're sitting empty, why?
Rissy?
So that was, I'm so glad that Kim brought that up, because our new magistrate had a nightly rental all those years and had she not had her foot in the door in sewer by being able to supplement that investment, so that when we needed a magistrate, poof, we had one and there she is. So I think, you know, limiting it to the Bear Creek area, again, you know, I know another gal that lived here forever, she bought a house and then she decided to go get a higher education and her higher education recruited her to an Anchorage job, but she keeps her house here. She is from sewer, but she has a job in Anchorage and she works in Anchorage and that helped her forever, she's definitely, when I see her face, she's from sewer. So it's just, it's a really hard, like.
The variables are too many, like how are you going to decide who is a resident? I have another one to bring up, um, I, correct me if you know the answer to this, is it, can you live on your boat in the harbor? From my understanding, you can.
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
Could you always, okay, so you can live, I, we did as a family, because we couldn't find a home, so, so I do know that, you know, all those years, yeah, as long as that's available too, cause that's, cause you can't rent out a boat, I can rent a boat out, yeah. So, there could be some homes there for some people which need a child to live, there's a lot of empty boats in Harvard.
So, anybody have anything else? No? Okay, well, then we will call this work session adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, thank you.